And we're on. Welcome. Good evening all. Welcome to the Monday, June 10th, 2019, regular meeting of the Town of Easton Planning and Zoning Board. We are being recorded and going out live via ECAT. For all of you in the audience who may be here for Full Circle Development, 661 Washington Street, or 250 Foundry Street, Southeastern Regional High School, we have received requests to continue for both to June 24th. So I guess we're gonna need a motion on the public hearing for 661 Washington.
I'll make a motion to continue, 661 Washington.
Second. All those in favor? Motion passes. And the same for Continuum Site Planner Review, 250 Foundry Street, Southeastern.
I'll make a motion to continue 250 Foundry Street till next meeting.
Second.
All those in favor? Great, thank you. Alright, so first up is a site planner review for 520 Foundry Street, special permit 19-153, The Foundry Kitchen Incorporated. So who's ever presenting, you can either grab the mic or you can sit over there and just please identify yourself for the record, and I just need you to use the mic so it can be recorded. Please and thank you.
Owner and proprietor.
Yes.
520 Foundry Street LLC, Scott Rubin, Solstein and Creedon, 71 Legion Parkway, Barrocton, Mass, on behalf of the applicant. And we have Dave Klinick, Collins Engineering.
You guys need a piano in front of you.
Three amigos.
Alright, so not used to speaking into a microphone like this and moving around, but you can bear with me. So again, Scott Rubin, on behalf of the applicant, we're here simply for a reinstallation of a drive-through window that was formerly on this property back in 1988 when the property was being used as Dorothy Lou's Tasty Pastry Shop, which takes me back quite a few years. Unfortunately, I can remember that far back. So you can see, this is, I think what we have on the screen here is the new proposed plan. We do have an existing conditions plan that we had provided previously as well, and the drive-through is going on the easterly side, which I mistakenly labeled as westerly in my brief. So we're going to, and Dave can talk about this as well if we need to, but the six spaces on the easterly side of the property will be lost to provide for a pass-through lane that's going in that area. However, and there's also some spaces in the rear, so directly to the rear of the property in the back, we're losing some of those spaces as well. However, due to the fact that the way the property was originally laid out, Dave was able to recapture, I think, four of those spaces. So in the reconfigured plan, the way, and they all meet and comply with what the requirements are, I think in the back, in the rear area, towards the rear and along this, I guess would be the westerly border now, we're able to provide for additional spaces that weren't there before. So we had, I believe, 45 spaces noted on the existing conditions plan. We're gonna be only down to 42 as newly constituted. We also did an update to this plan, which I can provide the board a copy with, but the only difference would be because of the size of the number of spaces, we need a second handicap spot, which is going to be just to the west of, on the other side of the crosshatch, which would be the fire, we call that the fire lane, right? So it may be difficult to see on this plan that's up on the board, but the space immediately to the, I would say, east will be, on either side of the fire lane will be handicap, but there'll be no loss of any spaces. So that's the only update to the plan. I do have a copy for the board as well for that, so that everybody is aware of that. So again, only the loss of three spaces once we've reconfigured the parking structure. We believe comfortably that we have a pass-through lane that meets all the criteria that's required. The flow goes all the way around to the rear and all the way out to the front. We don't expect there to be any real significant change in traffic as far as increased traffic is concerned. There's literally gonna be no construction related to this on-site other than the box out of the window itself and the interior that needs to be redesigned on the inside to give the bartenders access to the food product to be able to be delivered out to the customer when they drive around. We don't expect there to be maybe more than one or two at the most in queue at any particularly given time, but I think based on the distance that we have there, we have enough room for, what do we say, we had enough room for queuing cars along that bound?
Ten feet plus pickup.
Oh, in line.
I don't know, I've never calculated that.
It looks like there's enough room for two or three cars anyway, but...
At least maybe five or six more.
Okay, so it's not gonna be Dunkin' Donuts. It's gonna be a pretty modest increase in volume, if any at all. Potentially, it'll be some customers that were gonna come into the restaurant anyway and decided they'd rather have the convenience of a takeout with a pull-up drive-through instead, and so, you know, we're expecting that a good portion of those customers that maybe would've gone inside to sit down would drive around and have the convenience of taking the product home and not have to get out of their vehicles and take away a spot for carryout service. So I think the project fits comfortably on the site. I think we calculated out, there's more than double the number of spaces that are actually required anyway, and Dave did the calculation as to what we actually need for spaces, and it's, you know, we're comfortably within the requirements for the town, so. Again, as far as the criteria goes on the, as far as what the board is required to review, we certainly don't think just adding a drive-through window at this particular location will have any effect on any of the butters or any of the, you know, the neighborhood in general. This is a fairly commercially built-up neighborhood, as I'm sure you're all aware, in the eastern five corners area, and so this is consistent with what kind of uses are being done out in that particular area. Again, with the, we think we have enough room for a fire truck and emergency vehicles all at the same time in the event there was an unlikely emergency, and so we think that, you know, there's adequate space for vehicular traffic. We don't expect there to be any pedestrian issues either. Again, by taking away the spaces along the pass-through lane on the easterly side, there won't be any pedestrian traffic up in that particular area where the cars are gonna be pulling through. Aesthetically and functionality, again, there's really no change to the outward appearance of this location other than some restriping on the parking lot and the installation of a window that would barely be, wouldn't even be visible from the street itself. You'd only see that from the neighbor, so with that, I tried to keep things fairly short.
Sure, alright, appreciate it. So Stephanie, do you have anything you wanna add to your report?
I, a couple of comments. I mean, one of the things I did state in my report was that at 39 parking spaces, if there were 70 seats in-house, that's double the amount of off-street parking, but I am curious, is to the number of seats?
We have 52.
52, so, I mean, they have plenty of parking under the bylaw.
Sure.
Directional signage for the, so are you gonna, I'm assuming, I mean, you show the arrows, and those will be marked on the pavement?
Correct.
Directional arrows, but will there be kind of like a sign saying, "Pick up..."
Do not enter one way.
Yeah.
We have a "do not enter" sign on the building as it is.
But also just...
To the left.
Just, you know, a pick-up, so people know that that's the directional for pick-up. So you usually, is it there?
There's a "do not enter" sign on the left. We can certainly add a sign if it was preferable on the corner of the building to say, "Pick up around the corner." Is that what you mean?
Yeah, something that directs people who are coming for pick-up to know where they're...
Pick up to the right, and that way forces them around the corner.
Dave, it's drive-through, yes.
Or drive-through lane, or something, is it marked on the...
Yeah, the stripe on the...
So it's marked on the ground?
Yeah, and we're also gonna have those two additional stop, the stop lines are gonna be added to the pavement as well.
Yep. So that was what I was asking. Where are you showing the additional handicap space?
It's the existing space? It's right here.
On the other side?
On the side, the stripes.
It's existing there now.
Okay, but it's not shown on the plan?
On the revised plan.
Okay.
Right.
Okay, that's what I thought I heard you say, but...
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure.
So, are you good?
Yeah.
So just to interject, so we can make sure we know, so the discrepancies between what is on the board and the latest plan, the handicap space, you just mentioned something about stop mark, stop lines or something?
No, the stop lines are still there.
They're right there.
They're there, okay.
They're there, I'm just saying that...
Just the handicap mark.
That's the only difference, yes.
Board members, any questions or comments?
That's the existing plan though, right now.
This is the existing plan. This is the, this is the proposed plan, and then I have here copies, again, just addition of this...
Phase two.
Yeah, it's just being labeled as handicap. We're not adding any space, but just making sure it complies, that's all.
Where's the dumpster located? Or will it be located in the back corner?
Yeah, yes.
Yes, I saw that.
Yep.
I think the restaurant already has that natural traffic flow, so I don't really see this as changing the condition, and I'm just curious to see, like, are you gonna be altering your menu to accommodate the takeout? The takeout taste?
One more time. Most of it will be probably through the phone or online, so it'll be a little bit different coming in and ordering something.
I don't see it negatively impacting it, other than the fact that you have a popular, well-attended restaurant, so hopefully you are, yeah.
Sell even more food, pick it up.
Somebody's getting free fries. Just kidding. Anybody else? Any questions, comments?
Motion to approve the plan with, the new plan with the handicap spot, et cetera.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Good luck, gentlemen.
Thank you.
You need one copy?
Or two copies.
Two. Two copies.
Alright, next up, I'm gonna, it's Weber Farm, so I will be recusing myself and turning the helm over to Peter.
Thank you.
I designed a house with children.
Okay, so we have a Weber Farm architectural review for our new house design, number 16-56. Sir, if you please introduce yourself to the public on the microphone.
Sure.
For anyone watching, that might not...
Doug King, Doug King Builders.
Thank you. So Stephanie, you don't really have comments on the architectural review?
Hey Wayne, I haven't seen you here for a while. They said you retired. You retired?
I think they were delivered Wednesday.
Not till the end of the meeting anyways.
And which ones are these?
The very last one.
10, 7. But what's the 6, 7, 8? Okay, thank you.
So is this one of the lots on the left when you drive down to the, towards the...
It's, as you drive down, the first house, lot one's on the right, and then it's the next house.
Okay, oh, so it's on the right, so they...
Yeah, yeah, there's only one house on the right.
Yes, right, yeah, so there's one after that. I like that first one.
And construction hasn't begun yet on this, right?
No, you're not supposed to, right?
Right.
That was a trick question.
Board members, any comments or suggestions?
I just have one other question too. So this is a brand, this is different than the other designs that the board has already received.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
What are the materials for the roof over the porch?
Metal?
Yeah, okay.
Metal, same.
Few years ago, I could read that print fine.
Well, it seems to me that the design is in keeping with what was envisioned for development.
What else?
I don't know if I saw the original ones, so...
Alright, well, with no further comment, um...
Do you want me to bring up a couple of the other designs?
Glad to see them.
For, sure.
Yeah, why not?
So, to, this is... It's the floor plan.
Still have the garage can step back.
And is, Doug, is this, this isn't the one that's right next to this one on the first lot when you're driving in that's built?
If you flip towards the back page, there's actually, they have a lot plan.
Yeah.
I noticed that after I asked the question.
So lot one has already been built out, right?
Right.
And you know which designs? Well, we'll look at each one of these. So this is one that's further along in the cul-de-sac.
What are the garage doors made of? Some material or...
Which house?
Oh, let's see, the one that we're looking at.
Some PVC and some wood.
Okay, yeah.
The one with the three-car garage, I did put wood.
Okay, right. So this one might be PVC or wood?
Yeah. Less maintenance, more durability, affordable.
And this was designed C? And this one's been constructed already, right? I think it has.
Is there a bedroom over the garage?
Not in this one.
No?
We wanted to keep it down around 25 minutes.
What's in that space?
Five minutes.
What is that space, a different room?
Just a truss garage, so it's...
Okay, right, I see.
Get rid of the file uploading and just go back to the image that's right behind it. Or did it go away?
Are you looking for the elevations again?
Well, just whatever the last one was.
The one that I had?
Yeah.
That, that was E. I was gonna say that I agree with Wayne that in general, that the house is in keeping with the rest of the neighborhood and short of us putting on our personal design.
Which I don't think...
Which I don't think that is really the, is the intent, that I agree with your comments. And my only, if I had to ask anything, I would say, I don't think it's even pertinent really, some of the other ones have some vertical board. Did you think of incorporating this?
Yeah, we could do it like under the roof there on the porch.
Oh, there is some, or you were thinking about it?
I mean, I guess even the metal roof actually kinda adds a vertical feature to it.
Yeah, but I could put a beadboard under...
Or perhaps like on that one, the arched window in the middle has a less traditional window mullion grill in it than the one you proposed, but again, I don't really think it's, I don't think it's, we're not going house by house commenting on one window grill versus the other, so...
Right, anyways, right, I mean, we don't, kinda the idea is for them not to have this exact type of features, I suppose.
What kind of farmhouse you want.
That's right.
It's a farmhouse.
That's right.
Yeah. And as long as there are windows on all four sides of the building, right?
Well, that's up to the building.
I know, I know.
It's always a plus.
These aren't always the final window locations, I don't think anyways, but yeah.
As long as, yes, you can escape during a fire, we're good.
So do you, would you like a motion?
Yes, please.
I'd make a motion to approve the design for lot two, Matthew Drive.
Second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor? Motion passes.
Look, Doug's already redesigning it.
Next, we have Weber Farm request to release lot number 211, Matthew Circle. So at the back of the, that we just provided, there is a lot plan or subdivision plan showing the lots. So Stephanie, there's been additional work completed, and this is...
Actually, there has not been, but they did update the broadcast estimate, and there may have been some minor work done, but there's still 436,500 plus minus work left on the road to be done. They are requesting a release of one lot.
Lot two, yeah.
I'm sorry, did you say two? Lot number two, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. Which, seeing, how many lots does that leave us with?
You're holding six after this.
Right. You know, per the discussion a couple of weeks ago, going forward, you know, the recommendation to the board is not to sit and hold lots because we can't really do anything with lots if the road doesn't get completed.
You said in the middle of the point, no.
I'm sorry?
You're in the middle of the point.
Understood, understood, but I...
I think six. I think, Stephanie, you said moving forward, not, 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 not including this car project.
And I think what we've seen is these lots are selling, they are being developed. I was out there just last week, and I went, I was out a few months ago, and I think there were at least two more houses that had been built that the board had approved the plans for, so it is moving forward. One comment, I was talking with Andrea Langhauser, the conservation agent, and the replication, the wetland replication was supposed to be completed, weather permitting, and it's been, I think, two years since, well over a year since the work started, and the wetland replication has not been done.
We're working on it though. It has been a lot of rain.
There hasn't been a lot of raining for the last couple of weeks though, and the point being, you need to get in touch with Andrea and provide a schedule for when that work is going to commence.
Maybe make a note for the next request of a lot release, we'd like to see the rain guard completed, I mean, the replication area completed at that point.
Yes, I think that makes sense, yep.
Okay.
Do we still do core tests on the road, or is that for, not for a private road, or...
They, the short answer is yes, if needed.
Yes, yeah, but not on the subdivision, say, over, not on any road over a certain length or anything like that?
Yeah, if we haven't had someone on-site, they usually do a core test.
And is that, they do that after the...
Well, if we get a call, and I don't think we have, if we get a call that they're paving and Amory can be on-site, then you don't need to do the core test because they'll take measurements right there during the construction. It's when you're not able to be on-site or they, yeah, they do it, and then call and say, "Oh, we paved the road."
Yeah.
And even on a private way, because the board has a standard, and you wanna make sure that the buyers of those properties are getting what they're...
What's shown, right, yeah.
Right, yep.
Any other comments? No, any motions?
Make a motion to release lot two for Matthew Circle.
Second it.
Further discussion? All in favor? Motion passes?
Thank you.
Good evening.
Yeah, have a good night.
Is he, is he around the corner, or... It's been about a month since I pulled through Matthew Circle. Have they completed the houses, a couple of houses? It's been about a month since I've been through.
It's been about a month since I've been through there, so I'm...
No, I gotta get back over there and see.
Some of the ones on the lefty I had with...
I wanna say there were at least four houses.
They were well underway when I was through there, but I didn't know.
Yeah, the first one, which the last time I was out there still looked like it was in the finishing stages, is lived in, the guy was watering his lawn.
Nice.
Yard work.
Welcome back.
Where were we? So let's see, meeting minutes, always a...
I think I'm, page three, towards third paragraph from the bottom. I think I was just questioning if, I remember that we had major and minor change defined sort of, or in the bylaw, so I wasn't sure if that, if the change would constitute a minor change or even if that much of a change. So I didn't state that I thought it was a minor change, I just said I had to review the bylaw, section pertaining to major and minor changes.
Did you get that?
No, I'm not sure. So how would you like it changed?
Basically, I think what Peter was saying is that what he said was he'd have to review the bylaw as to what constituted a major change versus a minor change.
Thank you. Thank you. To just say on page four, I made a motion to endorse the plan because we can't really approve a, approval not required plan. Yes.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
What about abstain?
All right, I'll end with my report, so why don't we jump to the request, ZBA request for comment, variance nineteen dash seven to two oh one, major.
Greg, is this the one that we've seen before that the resident came?
Is it my microphone? Yes. This is the one, they came in for site plan review after it had been basically constructed, the white building.
Right, and like the neighbor behind came, I believe, and, yeah, okay.
Yeah, exactly. Right next to the, next to the rectory, I guess, right? Yeah, next to the rectory in the church center, whatever that is out back, whatever it's called.
It used to be the gymnasium, but...
Stephanie, or anybody, am I missing, does it say how many residential units?
Yes, I, no. So, in, I'm sorry, in the zoning board of appeals application, it does not. I had to go back to the application that they had submitted to discern that they were talking about three apartments.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
And it's a two-story addition. It's three apartments. One of those apartments will actually have a third floor loft because that loft will be in the existing third floor, like dormer space. And I do have, I did get some, I printed off the rendering, what did I do with those? Thought I had those here. I couldn't, I had a hard time trying to print off the floor plans, but if you're, the board's interested, I do have some renovations.
Were those included, were those included with this?
The elevation...
Because my only concern is what if that...
This isn't really what it is.
That really, I mean, that shouldn't be a basis for our discussion anyways, and what if it's not, I just hate to, where it's not part of this, I just don't think we should bring in something.
Okay, right, yeah.
Not because, not that, not that Mr. However changes plans, I'm just kidding, Dave.
But I think, I think the plan...
If it wasn't submitted with this.
No, I'm sorry, I think this...
So, if I...
This isn't the first, we've seen this, though, right?
No, so here's, if you recall, and this will help on our newer members, so, okay, we have been, about two years ago, we started to work on two zoning districts, Village Business District, which is kind of downtown Northeastern, and, excuse me, and then Queesah Commercial District, which is like Route 138 where Korea's Plaza, six sixty-one Washington. And we were trying to do zoning on both of them, but there, there are some similarities, but there were some big differences. So we parked, we parked, we decided to park the Village Business District till this year, and we worked on Queesah Commercial, so we got that set, and that passed the town meeting last year. So in fact, we just started, we were supposed to have our first meeting today, we had a consultant, we're gonna start, what I mentioned before, we're gonna start working this summer, writing some zoning, and the thought was for mixed use, you know, over here, because with the sewer district and all, you know, we've talked about how and when and should we introduce a residential component, you know, to mixed use. And, well, I guess mixed use has a residential component by its very nature.
It was the, if you looked at multifamily in the zoning bylaw, you can have one bedroom, one unit, one multifamily unit, which would be like one apartment per 60,000 acres and a maximum of three bedrooms.
Right, and that's been that way for a long time, a long time ago.
Yeah, it was written, so it wouldn't happen.
Right.
We recognize that. So, so DNN, I guess, I don't know, had hoped maybe this would go faster, I guess, and, you know, so, you know, this, this came across, and, but we, you know, we have, we've had some discussions in the house, we talked to town administrator, and that, this is, and you correct me if I'm wrong, but I think this sort of parallels the direction we've been thinking about.
Right. I think it's consistent with the direction the board's going. I think at the time, I think at the time, the zoning for the Village Business District and the mixed use, I don't think the board and the consultants at the time were necessarily recognizing that the multifamily zoning kind of...
Conflicted. Yeah.
Well, it wasn't, yeah, it was barely, it wasn't really, there's not an acre and a half lot over there, probably a safe church, right?
Yeah, one would preclude the other from a...
And, and then, so to answer the original question, so, yeah, we saw this, this site, I'd say it was just about a year ago.
Yes, yep.
Kind of post-construction, if you remember, because we, there was a little conflict because some members of the board wanted a different layout, but we kind of, like, we conceded having seen that it was paved and granite, curbage was in place, and cooler heads prevailed, and we all agreed to, you know, we don't want to operate like that in the future, so I guess this is the, this is the opposite version of that, right? So, this is pre-revised zoning, so anyways. So, all right, so that was my question, how many, how many units, because I didn't, yeah, so you said three?
Yes, yep.
On top of, as if I recall, right now it's two-story office, and the first floor, the addition's gonna be all office, and then above that it's gonna be residential.
Right, yep.
All right.
I mean, it's, it's the right place for it, if you think about it, it's where we should be looking for a higher density, is my opinion.
Yeah, no, I agree, and part of it's like, you know, I still, as someone, you know, we all work on zoning, you hate to, I like to go through that process, but at the same time, I still like to keep the flavor, we're sort of a small town, and if it's proposed something that's not outside of what we've kind of been talking, right, I mean, so, not ideal process, but doesn't mean that personally that I wouldn't support it, but anyways.
So would we just make either a yes or a no, or we say yes with a certain amount of square feet of apartments?
No, well, I think for this, don't forget, this would come before us, because it's a special, if this passes at ZBA, it's gonna come before us in the form of a special apartment.
And they've already submitted the replication.
So this is just a request for comment, so I think we can only comment on what's here. I don't think it would be proper for us to, I mean, I mean, they say a square footage here, anyways, right?
Okay, right, yeah.
Doesn't it say nineteen hundred square feet?
I mean, I think that's, I think that whole nineteen hundred is going to be the apartment component, right? Because that's two apartments, really, I mean, or three.
Three, small apartment.
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, you're right, average apartment last year in Massachusetts was what, six hundred and sixty-one square feet?
Okay, so it could be three, yeah, all right.
But, yeah, if I understand it correctly, the addition, well, they'll take the offices that are upstairs and the entire, like I said, the entire first floor will be...
Now, I mean, site plan wise, sometimes the board of appeals does have, they have...
This is three units, if you look on...
Oh, that's, I think you found it.
Your age is, your age is there. To me, I just bet it was a big redacted lot.
I still have 2020 vision, but it's just those small, the other small print.
darn front's getting smaller and smaller.
And I'm sorry, I'm not sure if, Peter, what you were saying was that just the apartments would be nineteen hundred square feet? It says an addition of nineteen hundred ninety-two square feet, two-story addition, so the entire addition is supposed to be nineteen hundred square feet.
Yeah, so it says three apartments, so that, yeah, that makes sense with the six hundred average.
And Chris, I want to know where you found that in here, because I could not find the number of apartments.
On the zoning table in the first print.
Oh, on the, okay, so on the, on the right here.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, this is the ZBA.
And how about parking spots, so that's, what do we do, two?
No, but...
One and a half, correct?
Keep going.
Yep.
I think when they came before us, before, there was some discussion about the parking, and then, the, I think the thought process was that they were gonna be switching off uses.
Because the business was...
Commercial, businesses, one for every two hundred or four hundred feet, I'm trying without pulling up the bylaws.
I don't remember.
I'll go grab it.
I would say that those are...
I didn't bring my copy of the bylaw, if I may.
Nobody, that wasn't where I found it, but...
Was it, but it was on a plan sheet?
It's on this one, where there's like a table.
Right there, yep.
Yeah, okay.
Three units is what they're pointing to have.
Yeah, there's your parking right there.
Right here, yep.
Twenty-five space per unit, one per five hundred.
One, it's five hundred, okay.
I can make that even larger.
And one point two-five for...
So, you know, so that means, I mean approximately, where is the, the...
There, yeah, they're, I remember that they were over on the spaces, remember, because we talked about it.
The addition's nineteen hundred, it's bigger, cut that in half, call it a thousand per floor, and it's, so, it looks like the, so it looks like it's roughly, you know, maybe a twenty-two hundred square foot footprint, so that's all commercial, so that's five spaces down, and then, yeah, so...
And I mean, the landscaping looks like what we already approved on the, on the last plan.
I think it's the same site, yeah, it's the same, I mean, the site's...
So, yeah, so we just are looking at the variance here, right, so...
Right.
The variance that they're asking for is sort of along the lines of what we've changed the zoning to in the future.
Seems to be.
Yeah, I think, I mean, Stephanie and I discussed this, and...
It's an odd basis for allowing the variance, but...
It is, it's, it's, yeah, like, I mean, like I said, I don't...
So this is just, this is something, it sounds like, that has been in the public domain, this is something that we think is going to change, it's only a matter of time.
Right. And I think in their brief, what they point out is the fact that the mixed use is allowed, and it's allowed by right in the business district, this is not in the village business district, right? This is just outside.
It says, I don't know.
And, but, the fact that the multifamily requires sixty thousand square feet makes it impossible to do the mixed use.
That's true.
What do we think the timetable is going to be where that actually gets changed?
Hopefully a fall town meeting.
Oh, really? So this is, we're talking about doing it this year.
Stephanie and I, yeah, Stephanie and I were supposed to meet with Judy Barrett today, but Judy was ill, and then the next step was Judy would be in one of our meetings in the very near future, to start, we'd all start working on that.
I mean, as far as other apartment, oh, well, apartment variances, what do we have? There was one on Day Street that I think we didn't recommend.
Day Street?
Yeah, the big house on the corner of Day.
I thought you did.
There hasn't been any on Main Street that we've said no to, because it's all apartments already, for the most part.
Right, right.
I thought we approved that.
I thought, I thought the board was in support of that.
Yeah, so it does come up besides this one spot, and this is actually more, this is more in the, you know, out of town areas, right?
Well, yeah, and I, you know, and, I mean, well, we were, I was gonna say, this is good because we can keep working on this, but we were already working on it, so it's just, but here's a real world example where we can, going forward, see what we can work with this.
Right, it will help you with, with the zoning and making the case for it.
Yeah, I'm just, I guess my only question is in terms of, you know, setting precedent, it doesn't sound like there will be here, because we're gonna change this anyway.
Right, yeah, I think it's safe to say if this, oh, go ahead.
No, that alleviates my concerns.
And if they even were a precedent, I wouldn't want to set one for, say, you know, maybe a ten apartment building in a certain, in certain locations, obviously, right, yeah, so...
No, fair enough, I, just to give you where my mind goes with these things, I mean, you know, you've got somebody who's trying to do a development here, and we don't have necessarily access to who's gonna be opposing it, and if these things get approved, and I've seen them get approved, and then some butter shows up and starts challenging it and hires a lawyer to do it, you end up with a, you know, lengthy multi-year process and the court ends up flipping the variance, and then you're right back to square one, it just ends up being a tremendous time waste for everybody. But I, given what everybody is saying here about our timetable, I don't see that as a realistic concern.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, so when this site plan was, when we were reviewing the site plan, there were some neighbors who, who had some comments, and the applicant at least had talked to some of them about working with the landscaping and, you know, other, I mean, I don't remember exactly what he had, that's just, that's what I recall.
Yeah, I did check the minutes, Peter, and that, that was one of the concerns, that if they remove the trees and they remove the buffer between the abutting property, and he agreed that he would talk with them and work with them on the landscaping.
Yeah, I think that's, not that that's important, but in this case, those comments, the comments that came up at that meeting at Best Americas, were, were sort of related to the infrastructure of, of being in a butter, or of, you know, trees, fences, screening. It wasn't use.
Right.
But the apartments are also on it, yeah, I see what, I get to your point, right?
Okay.
Robert, what you're saying, just as like a general concept, is that if the grounds for hardship aren't really as strong, and there wasn't, like...
Because these are, this is not, I mean, just as an example, just reading through the brief, and I appreciate the level of detail that he went through, but, you know, ordinarily, it's gotta be something related to the actual geography of the plot, and he actually sort of concedes the exact opposite. He says in here that the plot's essentially the same, but which I kind of thought was counterproductive.
Yeah, I read it as him saying that the, the issue with the lot is it's too small.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that's the geography, that's the problem.
I'm willing to overlook, you know, these things because of the circumstances.
Yeah, and this really, if, if this came out of the blue, and again, just speaking for myself, you know, I'm, you know, I'm always very concerned with precedent, because when, when something's done, then everybody wants to do it, right? But if I hadn't participated in or in one of many discussions we've had, not necessarily specifically about this property, about this neighborhood, about this area, about what we wanted to do, my preference would be not to do this with a variance, to do it after we wrote the zoning, but, but this is in keeping with what we're gonna be working on, so it's...
Yeah, it's sort of the reverse problem.
Well, it's, you know, you pick and choose your battles, I guess, that's what I say, you know, I'm like, oh, I don't, you know, if I was to lay across, you know, the railroad tracks on this one, and then six months later, go, hey, remember what they wanted to do? We want to do it now, so...
Well, and that's the thing, if they aren't able to get financing or something like that six months from now, then it's the reverse problem, they're gonna be looking at everybody else on the street who's able to do what they want it to do and they can't do it. So I, I'm comfortable with it, I...
No, the other point is, anybody else? Sorry, sorry for the audible sigh. Started designing a house at two o'clock this morning. Sometimes I forget wrong, TV. Go ahead, Mr. Benson. You're gonna go say something?
I wasn't, I was, I was thinking you were gonna ask for a motion.
I would like to have a motion.
I'll make a motion to recommend the variance to the ZBA.
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? That's unanimous, thank you.
Okay, so that's everything. So, folks, we just witnessed a rather melancholy historic moment, as I've known for a little while, and I think some of you have known too, that our, our dear friend and colleague, Mr. Benson, was gonna be leaving us for, for greener pastures, literally, at some point. And Wayne called me the other day and to let me know he was gonna be submitting his letter of resignation, and so I asked him to, to please come to this meeting so that, you know, there's, I've been doing this thirteen years, one of the reasons I'm in Easton, I actually met Wayne during college, but it's, and then you kind of drift apart, but I was glad we were able to reconnect for, what have you been on here, about eight or ten years, I think, right?
Yeah, somewhere around there.
And you're, like, I could say, well, thank you for your service, yada, yada, but, you know, as you...
know, as you all know, Wayne's really been invaluable in his input on this board and his ideas, and we won't be able to replace him, hopefully we'll get someone just as skilled and something different, but it's, it's been a pleasure to be your friend and it's been a pleasure to have you on this board, and I think we wouldn't have done, I'm very proud of the work this board's done while I've been on it, and, and you're a big part of that, so you'll be missed, and I know a lot of these guys will miss you, so...
Thank you very much.
And we wish you the best.
All right, you're gonna let me make one more motion, right?
Absolutely.
I know, who's gonna, maybe arm wrestle fights this evening?
Who's gonna make sure, who's gonna make sure the board doesn't meet on Valentine's Day again?
You can remember me on Valentine's Day. All right.
For the last time, Easton...
I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? Motion passes, thank you.